Need to order to stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And you call the roll, please. Mr. Ward?
Yes.
Is Ribola die?
Yes.
Dr. Bennett?
Yes.
Yes. You're all here this evening. I would entertain a motion for the approval of the minutes for the August 19 regular meeting.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Ward. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Workman. Any corrections or additions? Do you know who you call the roll? Mr. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Workman?
Yes.
Is Ribola die?
That's Dane.
Dr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mrs. Gatzman?
Yes.
Motion carried. Commendations and communications.
Beginning of our folks are here tonight.
Beginning of the year. They deserve a break. And no reports, no public participation noted. So we'll move right on to board items for discussion. And no items for information or approval at this point.
It may be a theme here.
This is going well.
That's where I'm going.
Mr. Seager, would you like to review the additions and deletions?
Sure, I have two additions to your agenda tonight. One is certainly excited for Cindy Fannin. She's at East Elementary. She has now, she's going to retire at the end of the year. She's getting it to us early, so she won't be thinking about what the end of the year might look like, but...
Thank you for that.
Her husband probably made her.
Thank you for that.
She does an amazing job there and has been there a long time. And so, you know, we'll get a chance to really kind of take our time and make sure we get the right fit. That'll be important. So...
What grade does she teach there?
Yes.
And so, we do have a couple supplemental contracts for the homework. They call it their study table, but it's an after-school tutoring program. So those two items for your approval tonight, as we get to those sections, Section 11B.
Moving on to the superintendent's report.
Sure, I have some information to share tonight, three really separate topics. And so, I'm kind of excited to share a little bit of this for you. The link is in your electronic agenda, but I can also give you a hard copy. So first is the Ohio School Report Card. We had an inkling of what this was going to look like several weeks ago. And they did finally come out this past weekend. And I just can't tell you how proud I am of the work that we've been doing in a lot of areas here. And so, just to give you kind of a refresher, what the grade card is made up of. There's an achievement component, that's really the test scores that Ohio puts together. There's one measure there. There's a progress component, that's one measure. There's an early literacy component, which has three measures. There's a graduation component, and that really has two measures. It's kind of this year's graduate and fifth-year cohorts. And then there's the gap closing. Again, that's that area that we kind of closed between our different subgroups, bringing them closer to where they need to be. There is a sixth one up there that is still just a report only. Next year it becomes official, and we're all really, really going to be curious of what that looks like. Because you can see if there's 11 measures that make up that one component. And when you talk college and career workforce, military readiness, and on and on. There's a lot of us still asking a lot of questions. Well, how is that going to be measured and so on and so forth? But we're using these five basic grade card components right now. So whoops, wow, did that happen.
We really did want this, we need to go quickly.
Just as a quick reminder, the rating system has gone to a star system. So one star means you need significant support to meet the state standards. Two stars mean you fell short of the state standard. Three stars is you're meeting the state standard, so you're doing what you need to do. Four stars is exceeding the state standards. And five is significantly exceeding the state standards. As a district overall, we got a four star as the entire district. So we're definitely exceeding and doing some really good work in the area of achievement, progress, and even gap closing as a district. We are significantly exceeding in that area. So when you can stay in that four, five-star range, that's really something to be proud of. Graduation is still a challenge for us, and we continue to try to look for ways to improve that. We're meeting the state standard, but I think our goal, our collective goal, I know the high school's goal, my goal, would definitely want to be up in there into the four and five stars. We have a lot of transientity in the district. And this measure is calculated based on when a student enters their freshman year of high school. So it's not just the end when they graduate. If we lose students anywhere in that four-year cycle, and maybe they go off somewhere, or they withdraw to an online, but then they can't make it and they quit, we get them back. And so, you can see that that could be somewhat of a challenge. So, but an overall four rating, I think when you take a look across our similar demographic area and even look in the county, you're going to be proud of that number. If you drill it down to our specific schools, again, those are those component ratings. The overall is that school in its totality. And so, you see in our elementary areas, three of our elementaries were a five star. They were significantly above. All the other elementaries are four stars this year. Pleasant Street made some really nice gains. So that certainly means that they're exceeding the state standards. The high school has bumped up a half a star, so they were at a four last year. They're now at a 4.5, almost to a five star there. The middle school is still meeting state standards. But I will say, as you look at the middle school, you'll probably, you know, walk your way across and see a green and kind of a gold star there. It's very indicative of middle schools throughout the state of Ohio. When you see us compared to our similar districts or the state, you'll see that we're exceeding those districts. So all in all, middle schools tend to ride a lower score across the board. Doesn't mean we want to stay there, but just to give you some context. You look at achievement, and again, those are the test scores. Four of our six elementaries are five stars. Just really impressive. The other two are one is a three and one is a four. Progress, you see gap closing. Gap closing to see four of our elementaries with five stars. Five in the district have five stars, and gap closing is really exciting to see. I drilled it down a little bit further for you, but this is our comparable districts. I know this is maybe hard to see, I won't spend a lot of time, you can look at this. But remember, in the past, I've shared with you our similar demographic area. In other words, they take the size of Mount Vernon City schools, they look at our demographics, our population, a whole host of about 13 characteristics. And so, all of these districts here are most like Mount Vernon in the way that they make the comparison. When you look at overall of those 20 districts, there are only, there's only one district that scored better than us, and it's a 4.5. There's only two districts, or three districts in that whole 20-some group that even had a four star. Everybody else is kind of three, three and a half in there. You can walk across this, I'll let you walk across on your own. If you want to see where we rated with achievements, in other words, that's test scores, you'll see we're a four star, and you can follow down through, and you can see where some of those other districts kind of fell. Same with progress, same with our gap closing scores and so forth. So a lot to be proud of when you start to go, okay, what's our like districts? I mean, it's maybe not fair to compare us to a district that has 5% poverty rate, right? And likewise, it may not be fair to compare us to an inner-city, maybe, you know, where socioeconomics are quite different. These are, this is our cohort group. And I think when you see that we're right there at the top of that group, that says something very positive.
Where's Oregon City at? Do you have any idea?
Around Toledo.
Very far north.
Very far north. I thought, I put these together at each grade level so that you would see this. So under that, you know, everybody likes to be valued by the Ohio test scores, the third-grade test. Well, you see in math, our district had a 74.9% passage rate. Our similar district cohorts only had a 61, and the state was 62.1. So we were significantly higher in math and significantly higher in English in third grade. To be at a 78% when the state average is 64%, it's almost 24, you know, 24% increase. You look at fourth grade, you're going to see the same kind of things. And again, if you want to look at the graph versus the numbers, and you can look at both, of course. We're the red, and then it's the similar districts, and then it's the state. And so, you see, we're significantly higher. Math, 83.5%. Go ahead.
It's interesting, though, on the third grade, our numbers, but yet in the literacy.
That was at risk.
For the literacy one in third grade?
Yeah.
Yeah, see, so the literacy score is really a tricky one. So if I go back all the way to, if I go back to here, you see that early literacy component? There are three measures there.
Okay.
And the three measures are how well you do on the third-grade test, your fourth-grade promotion, which you can be promoted and not meet the standard or the benchmark. And then there's another component that takes place starting in kindergarten all the way to third grade, and that's the on-track, off-track. Feels like there's a little bit of a gamesmanship to play in the on-track, off-track, because the more people you put off-track to try to get on-track, they calculate when they become on-track.
Okay.
And so, you kind of feel like you get penalized. So you could say, well, everybody's on-track. And then if they pass, then you're going to get a great measure there. But we've had a lot of conversations, and I know Eric and Kathy would concur with this. I don't know if you have anything to add, Eric, on that literacy score, but those three components are hard to kind of pull together and understand.
I thought you did a nice job explaining it.
Go ahead, Eric.
Helps if you do the comparable districts.
Yes.
I think so, yeah.
Better when I saw that. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, good point. So you look at your comparable districts, and then you see, you know, how many...
Nobody, yeah, two four-stars.
Fourth grade, there you go, or math, we're so much higher. English, again, 10 points higher in fourth grade. Fifth grade, we have three tests measured in fifth grade. We also throw science in there. Again, math is 80%, the state's 57, our cohort 65. And, you know, you can see those similar districts. Science is something we have always been strong in, and we often ask ourselves, why are we so strong there? Because we don't really have what I would call detailed curriculum. I know prior to my coming here, and Eric and Kathy were a part of it, they kind of developed a sense of a curriculum there, and it has stood the test of time, because we have always done well in the area of fifth-grade science. So that says something about us.
I think our fifth-grade science teachers are passionate about what they do.
That certainly helps too, right? So we get to sixth grade, and remember, these were our lower scores, right? According to the district level, but, you know, and you see the scores are reflected as being lower. But when you look at similar districts or even the state, we're above. Same with English, maybe not quite the same level, but we're higher than those two categories. You take a look in seventh grade, again, 62% in math, where the state average is 49%. 67.2 in English and 61.7 at the state level in English in seventh grade. And then, of course, you've got the eighth grade, science, we're sitting there at about 12 percentage higher than the state, 10% more than our similar districts. And then you see math and English there, again, 56.6 and 58. That doesn't seem like a huge passing score, but the state isn't doing well either. So then it makes you wonder, is it the test? Is it how it's correlated and how it's there? So I certainly know that the middle schools continues to work hard to try to raise those threes to fours, but I think there's a compilation of the challenge here that makes it difficult. High school, we saw some really neat numbers here. Algebra one was 76%, the state was 55, biology 75, American history 79, English language art 76. So you can see, when, you know, the simple thing is, look at the graph. If the red is higher than the others, I'm feeling good. So I just thought that that was interesting information to share. And I just want to say a special kudos to our staff for continuing to just kind of stay focused on quality academics. We know we can always be better, we'll always strive to be better. But we get these things out, and it is a little bit of a testament of kind of where we're at. And I'm sure you're going to see some articles come out in the paper here soon, whether it's comparing us to other districts. But I think you'll see that, you know, we represent ourselves really, really well. And then, of course, I forgot geometry and American US government. All right, so any, before I move on to Facility Advisory Committee, any thoughts relative to the report card? Again, you can dig a little deeper, it's on the website.
I like the new format. Easy to understand, and I love the graph, that makes it really clear.
Just a question, do you know anything more about those 11 measures that'll be coming up, about military readiness, what that is meaning?
I don't, I don't know, Kathy, if you have a sense for that at all?
No, it's one of the things that are, assessment conference I went to, and I have another meeting this week about it as well too, just to learn more about those level components of what's there to comprise it. They're doing away with the college and career readiness component, and now it's broadened to some of these other components to make it more factorial, what your kids may be going into. But my hope is to learn more, and been working with our high school guidance counselors and our college readiness advisor, just to make sure it's on their radar too, so that we can, everybody's tapping into their own little network room, so we can pull all of our resources and information together. So, yeah.
Do you think it's just a measure of how many students you had doing ROTC?
I don't know if it's ROTC as much. I feel like the SEALs are going to come as a part of this. You know, we ought to bring you back more definitive, looking at those, maybe we can even in our work session, we can talk about those 11 components that make that up. Because I think that's something the high school is going to have to really focus on.
I'd just like to say thank you to everyone on our staff and everyone at Central Office for working so hard, especially when you compare what some people say that after the pandemic, that our kids are not achieving as well. And I think this is a testament to our school system.
This next section I just wanted to share briefly is, just to capture a little bit for you, our fourth Facility Advisory Committee meeting. You know, we've been meeting since June of this past year. And it's been a good process, it's been a slow process, and understandably so. Just to give you a sense, this was our agenda a week ago, and we've done some educational visioning. I wanted to share briefly what that was. We finished our building tours, we got some information about the OFCC, and we started to really look at next steps for the master facility piece. Just to give you a sense, the educational vision component consisted of a lot of different things. However, one of the things was, all the teachers were asked, what do you think the skills or character traits that students will need to be to be successful in the future? And this was a compilation of things that were brought up by the teachers, K through 12. And they said, these are important things. And when you look at those, open-minded, communication, responsibility, creativity, compassion, problem solver, these are the things they're saying are going to be important for us to teach. Well, oftentimes, those things there aren't measured on a proficiency test. And yet, we have to kind of balance the two, right? So that was really kind of an interesting takeaway. The other piece, and this was a really, really, I enjoyed this exercise about as many, as much as most. So the question that was posed to every teacher was this. Think of a day as a teacher, one of your best days, when you just felt like things were click-it, like you were making a difference, right? And in everybody's mind, they had to think of that best day. And it was really interesting what they came up with. And what they came up with were things like this. These were the characteristics of a best day. There was interactive or active learning. Students took ownership. There was student choice and voice. There was application of skill and knowledge, not just knowledge, but how to apply it and how to use it. It was student-driven, it was fun, students learned from their mistakes, the work was relevant and meaningful. Collaborative, it was challenging, there was student engagement, excitement, it was experiential. These were their best days. And sometimes, it gets easy to get caught up into, if you remember those quadrants that we talked about, it gets easy to get caught up in knowledge acquisition, and that's important. But we said our best days were when we were doing this kind of stuff. And the reason we did this was, do our facilities provide us the right environment to have best days, where we can do this kind of stuff? We spent some time talking about this, and so there's the very traditional classroom, the one that we all grew up in, and really, all of our buildings are very traditional in their way. And then you start to move down the pipe to a transitional space, and then to a transformational space. And we talked about what those kind of were and what they looked like. Every single group, after understanding that, decided they had to put a red sticker where they thought we were today. Then they had to put a green sticker, where if they were to teach their best days, most impactful days, what environment might that be? And you can only imagine, whether it was a K-2 group, or the 3-5 group, or the middle school group, or the high school group, all the red were right there in traditional, right? And then where they thought we could have more better days were in facilities that started to move a little bit more transitional and transformational. Ironically, though, you would have thought that, who would you have thought would have been closer to the transformational? I'm just kind of curious. Just looking at that space, and it can be way different, but in a space that certainly isn't traditional, look like little separate rooms, a little auditorious there, you know, separate little pull-out rooms. Believe it or not, the K-2 teachers loved it. The 3-5 teachers, not so much. They were more in the transitional. The high school shifted a little bit in between the two, and so did the middle school, even though we have more of these spaces that are there. So that was just an interesting tidbit. We did finish up between our last board meeting and this board meeting with all of our building tours. And I thought that that was important for us to do. What we did after those building tours is we got back together, and they were given a task to write down in 14 different areas. And you've maybe seen, that was from parking lots to classroom size, to all of these areas. We're looking at the same areas, and this is just one, this happened to pick East Elementary. And so, you can see, we identified the positives, but we also identified the challenges. Because we have to understand what are the good that comes and what are the challenges that come. And so, as successful as we are at East, and as much as that's a beloved neighborhood school, look at the positives, look at the negatives, and as we move forward, we have to make decisions about where we move in terms of those buildings, and efficiency, and so on and so forth. So we've done this for every building, and so it's neat to take a look at those kinds of things. We also got into some master planning considerations. We asked, well, okay, let's just start throwing up on the wall, what do you think as far as building configurations? We could go everywhere from being exactly the same to all of these different types of choices. And it really just gave us a chance to kind of dream a little bit and to start sharing some thoughts, right? And we did this right at the end of our third meeting. So when we came back in our fourth meeting, we started to play with ideas. And not only did we have some ideas for that particular meeting, but we came up with some additional ideas during the meeting that we're not even close to being done with this part of it. We're still working in here, trust me, right? But this gives you an example, this is, hey, you know what, we like what we have. Let's just keep what we have. Down to, here's a different idea, and that was brought up. You know, renovate the high school, middle school, look at building, some new K-2s, and let's do a K-2, 3-5. And there were various other options in between. Again, we didn't get to any place where we felt comfortable at our last meeting, which really takes me to here. This is planning and scheduling our next steps. As you look at this next one, this was our, this was our original thought as we went into this. We were going to have our meetings, and we've been doing a really good job. We have a meeting coming up here in October. By November, we were supposed to share out in community kind of meetings, and then really come back to the board with a recommendation, anywhere from, let's stay the status quo, to, hey, here's other things to consider. Based upon our last meeting, and I know Tim was able to be a part of that one, you know, every time we answer a question, we have two more questions. And I think that's typical. And we're starting to get caught into the, well, what if this, then what? Then what? Should we look at this? How do we preserve the historical integrity? What sites would we look at if we built new? Well, what would be the financial implications? And those are all great questions. But what it led me to believe at that point, and I'll share with the group on October 8th, is we may want to slow down a little bit, and we may want to begin to think about being a bit more specific and going into some committee kinds of work. Because the one thing we have to be able to do is, when we go in front of the community, we have to be able to articulate the vision, and we have to answer all the questions that we can. And we're having so many more questions now, that that may be something I'd love for the FAC, the Facility Advisory Committee, to consider. Now, what would that mean? If they all said, we want to stay the course, we think we're ready, we think we can explain it, then we'll have that conversation, and then we would have to come to you before the January meeting and make a declaration, if that were the case, for a May ballot. If they said, you know what, I think maybe developing some committees, taking a little bit more time, answering all the questions that we all have, then we could look at moving this thing out to November of next year, which would then give you some time to have the meetings, take some tour visits. We talked about things like schools within schools. Have you ever heard that term? Fredericton is a perfect example of a school within a school. It's one big school, but there's a high school wing, and there's another wing, and then there's an elementary wing. But the efficiencies of one building is something certainly that districts consider. Well, you could consider a much bigger K-5, a school within a school. Well, I don't want a building of 800 for an elementary, they don't build them that way. It might be, hey, here's your 300 going down this corridor. And yet, we hear that, but we can't conceptualize it. So it might mean taking tour visits to really understand what that's about. We had one facility community member who said he understands the heartbreak that comes from perhaps leaving an old building, and has went to other districts when they've had to make these tough choices, and just listened and walked through and heard the concerns, and how did you address those concerns? I just feel like we have to be there and answer those questions before we think we can push this thing forward. I want to make sure that all of this effort isn't just a hurried race to get to something that maybe we're not ready for. So you probably get a sense for where I'm kind of leaning, although I want this to be a Facility Advisory Committee decision. I think after hearing from some folks after our last meeting, I think there's a few others feeling in a similar way.
I don't know, I won't speak for you, but I think this last meeting was good, but it almost raised more questions. Didn't feel like we took a step back, but I think we realized how much really goes into this. And it went down a few, you know, turns, like if we closed the school, what do we do with the school? Do we raise the building? Do we do something else? I mean, there was so many scenarios that went into play. You know, reconfiguring grades, if we did that, what would that look like? And, I mean, you saw some examples there, but to get it to the point, to take it to the community, I didn't feel like we're really close. I mean, there's a lot of questions. And if our group of however many, 50 or so people have questions, taking it to a much larger group, I can only imagine what that would be. But, a lot of good work, but there's still a lot of things to iron out, for sure.
And I think breaking, potentially developing some committees where they really focus on an area might be a site selection committee, or historic preservation committee, or a financial committee. Again, you know, we met with David Conley, who's helped us financially in the past. Again, you know, we met with David Conley, who's helped us financially in the past. We just happened to meet with him this week, and he shared some stuff with Judy and I that we were like, I guess I didn't think of that. Or, I mean, so we need to really dig a little deeper.
I think the subcommittees would be a good idea, because, I mean, you probably just named four right there. In our last meeting, we were talking about all of those and more, you know? So to try to address all of those different issues, I think subcommittees, breaking them down even further, would be helpful doing that. It's just, when you're compiling five, six factors, whatever it is, all in one, it was...
I probably came up with, just in our, we had a director's meeting this morning, we came up with probably six to 10 committees you could easily come up with from, you know, somebody sharing about the building tours. I mean, that has, what is the OFCC willing to do? What's that look like?
That's a whole other piece, too. That's a big piece.
That's a big piece.
So that's kind of where we're leaning, but I wanted to bring you up to date. The work has been good. I don't want to lose momentum. I think if we take a brief pause and go into committees, we probably do need to take a bit of a pause after our October meeting. And you know, November and December are really crazy months as they are anyway. And so to kind of really maybe get this thing started back in January, because really the reality is, we need to make sure that as we dot the i's and cross the t's, we've got to come back to the board with some sort of a recommendation, probably by the latest May. Because then if we were to go to the ballot, we want to make that well-known. And then we got the summer and the fall to really gear up and to make sure we can share that with our community. Okay? And then the last thing I have, food service update. I believe things are really going well. I'm hearing from all of the principals who are really happy with the direction we're going. It's really short in its process. The choices that we're getting now, certainly at the middle school and the high school, you know, when you've got four entree choices, it's just really, really nice. We've got work to do. We've got equipment that needs repaired. You know, we're finding deficiencies in some areas. What we're also finding is, as more students eat, we need more support staff to support that, right? I mean, and so we're talking about that, and we're working with the union on how to make that work and try to stay within the parameters that we are. When we went into this, now this is really small, but I'll let you look at this as we go. I took a snapshot from a year ago, the very same week a year ago, to this year. And so when you, if you just take that top line, and I'm not going to read through more than that. So Columbia in 2023, for that week, 9/11, 9/12, 9/13, 9/14, 9/15, the breakfasts that were served in the morning and the lunches that were served. If you take that all the way across to the other side, one year later, now that we're free, all right, you'll start to see a growing change. So instead of 71, 81, 71, it's 104, 106, 120 in breakfast alone. In lunches, it went from 106, 109, 113 to 131, 141, 145. Our benchmark, when we went into this, and Judy and I had to work with the Ohio Department of Education on this, for us to make this work, to provide free breakfast and lunch, we felt we needed a 20% increase in participation. In this short snapshot, which is 10 snapshots, 10 days, or really five days, but breakfast and lunch, we were over 20% and closer to 30% in all of the green days at the bottom. Only one day did we fall short of that 20% mark. Don't know what was served on that day. I could probably go. But all that to say, there was increased participation, it just wasn't 20% on that day. And so you can go across and you can look at the individual buildings. Ironically, when you take a look at, let's say Pleasant Street and Dan Emmett, who have been free for, I mean, well before this year, even their participation rates are up, which is kind of nice to see. I don't know, Judy. Judy's been working a little bit with Meg from Food Service, and I know she's had some positive feedback relative to that.
Yeah, it's been, it's been interesting, because we sort of had to reinvent everything, because we have a new secretary, we have a new director, we have a whole new structure with the company instead of, you know, our own. And then we also have CEP. So all those things together means that, you know, there's a lot of different things. But Meg's been great. She's finding some things, because she hasn't actually worked in food service in a school before. So she has a lot of questions, but the good news is that she's got a good relationship with our folks at ODE, ODEW, and they're helping us find out, you know, all the things that need to be done. So sort of building it over again, but it's going really well. At least from my point of view, they've been really good to work with. Last week, they had our first invoice ready. This is Airmark, the company that we went with. They had our first invoice, and because I had a lot of questions about, what was that going to look like, they came to meet with us. Came to meet with us. In their suits, came down, sat down, went over everything, asked how things were going, line by line on the invoice. I mean, it was really impressive and very professional, I thought, so. And they're willing to come every month. I think we'll pick it up pretty quick, but yeah. But it was nice, and they met with the girls in my office and myself, so.
And there still are changes to be made. I mean, a few weeks in, we haven't made big changes in the way that, you know, we're doing the pre-prep over at the high school. That will slowly change. The entree choices in the food selection, that certainly has started to see and be different. So I think we're going to find some different recommendations as we go. I will say this, it will not be the status quo. We're not going backwards. And so, you know, if we're harkening on days of old, we're not going backwards. I think we got some good plans as we're moving forward, and we want to continue to be able to provide this level and even better as we move forward. Good afternoon. All right. So that's my district update. I knew it was a short meeting tonight, so I thought I'd share a little bit more.
No, thank you. That's great information.
Thank you.
All right. Curriculum instruction, Dr. Bennett.
I just wanted to, most of the articles, all of them were good, but we talked about several of them. The third article on West Virginia, Kenauas County Schools, I thought that was pretty interesting. It's part of a statewide initiative that provides online mental health resources and supports their families. And it also uses an app to enable parents to track their students' bus locations in real time. And they have, the app is Zoner My View, and they have a database of their child's bus number, and the parents have to have a special, you know, I was worried about, well, could somebody else hack into this? But you have, parents have to have a special 10 to 11 character code to get on. So it's not like anybody can, you know, check on your child. The buses already had Wi-Fi and GPS, so that was all set. And they offer an online tutorial on YouTube, which I thought was also good. So this, parents would know how to, you know, to access the app and to use it. So I thought that was pretty impressive, and board members can look at it, and, you know, if we want to talk to, you know, hard people about doing things like that, we can look into it if you're interested and you think the community would appreciate that.
Take a look at that video.
Any questions? Thank you.
Only one item in this section for your approval tonight, is an overnight skiboarding trip. They go, they've been going yearly to Holiday Valley in New York, and so the group will depart on January 31st and return on the 2nd.
I have an entertaining motion for the overnight ski trip.
Salute.
Second. Thank you very much. Any questions? All right. Will you call the roll? Ms. Regola-Dye?
Yes.
Dr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Workman?
Yes.
Mrs. Getzmann?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried. Fiscal Services. Okay, the financial report is first. First page, as always, is the cash balance. You can scroll down and take a look at that. We're still staying up right about where we were before. That outstanding payroll and bank, bank errors for $1.5 million. We had a deposit in from the auditor's office, but we got on the last day of the month, and we weren't able to get the breakdown in time, so that's why that looked like that. This is my, I call it the SM2. This is where we look at what we have in there, what we expect to collect, what we expect to spend. Now, again, we don't have a new forecast in there, so we're just moving over to 2025 from last year's forecast. So there'll be some changes, especially on the expenditure side when we move that extra money over. It's included in here, but we don't have the details yet. So we should have collected and/or spent 16.6%. Obviously, we've got 41% of our taxes in, 48% of our tangible personal property. That's the first half of the fiscal year tax. The other ones are right around 16%, as you can see, operating receipts. Some of that is Medicaid money that we get in. We got $300,000 in Medicaid reimbursements already this year, which is a, it's a nice amount that we get. Down in the expenses, I got a little worried when I looked at 36%, when we're only finished the second month. I did some research and found out we had a couple of large purchases that were posted to the wrong account, wrong fund. They were out of the general fund. So those will be fixed next month, but I wanted to show on there. It's still going to be around 25%, but keep in mind that we buy a lot of supplies at the beginning of school years, since people getting their room ready and so forth, so. Total expenditures, 16.65%. So that's, that looks pretty good. Our investments, got another $70,000 last month, so we're up at $141,000 for the fiscal year so far, so. And again, we are still working with Meter. They do a great job for us. They just do. They let us know when they have something maturing. You know, they're experts in this, so they can go out and find us the best rates, so. And the rest of the report is the usual things. And my final appropriations for this fiscal year, this is just the amount that we're guessing we're going to spend. The $47,000 is based on the five-year forecast number. It's rounded up a little bit, but that's what we think. The other funds, in case you're asking, basically, we sort of look at what we spent last year, and maybe bump it up five or 10%, just so we have it covered. We can change these during the year, but the principal's fund, that's '08 money, that's money, the principal's, usually that's like fundraisers, other things like that, so we never know. But we sort of just base those on prior years. When we get down to the 400s and 500s, those are grants that we get from the state. The 500s are federal grants, and those get awarded to each year. So we go in and put those in once we get them. Again, sometimes there's additional money that comes in later in the year. If there is, we can go in and change these. But for now, the auditor's office needs final appropriations by the end of September, so once these are approved, I'll send these over to the auditor's office. And then I think I have some donations to Pleasant Street from the Mount Vernon Church of Christ, a large box of headphones for kids. We have a memorial book, title of Grandma's Girl, and that would be in memory of Linda Seitz, her mother, she's the mother of Laura Looney, who's a teacher at Columbia, and that'll go in the Columbia library. And that's all I have. Entertaining motion for the Fiscal Services.
Salute.
Thank you, Ms. Regola-Dye.
I'll second.
Any questions or corrections? Mary, now would you call the roll? Mr. Regola-Dye?
Yes.
Mr. Workman?
Yes.
Mr. Ward?
Yes.
Dr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mrs. Getzmann?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Yes, I, there weren't any links to give you this time around, but I did want to review from School Management News, HB 47, which now mandates that AEDs be installed in all schools. Although the state funding for the AEDs has been requested, it was not included in the final bill. The bill does require that public and chartered schools hold informational meetings to address the symptoms and warning signs of sudden cardiac arrest. HB 214 will go into effect on October 24th. This bill requires that schools reasonably accommodate sincere religious beliefs in regards to absences. And this also includes up to three days for religious expression, and to accommodate, we must do also for exams and testing. This is known as the RED Bill, or Religious Expressions Act. And that's all I have for now. Did anybody have any questions or comments?
Just with the last bill that you discussed, students have to declare within the first 14 days.
Yes. They're early in the school year.
So they can't decide in the spring.
Yeah.
In case people are listening who might be interested.
There's another bill out there that was passed, signed by the governor and is enacted, of course, 90 days after that signature. It's House Bill 24. And that was House Bill 24, right? Did I say that one right?
24, 29.
Sometimes you get the numbers mixed up. Essentially, what it is, it's kind of an odd bill, because, well, the governor has been really wanting us to kind of clamp down on, you know, technology and mobile devices and screen time and things like that. This particular bill that went through wants to limit our ability to monitor our Chromebooks and what students are doing on them. And they're using it as a free speech exercise piece. So it's been a lot of concern among superintendents and others throughout the state relative to this, as we all have software that kind of, you know, will give us alerts and warnings if someone is into something they shouldn't be into, or they say something that might be like, I'm worried about them and their mental health. This particular bill really restricts our ability to utilize those softwares to do that. And so I feel like it's kind of been a political takeover of this particular concept, and we're all, we're all trying to scratch our heads going, we're trying to protect our kids, but you're taking away tools that we could do that in the name of free speech. And so, not sure where, I'm not sure it's going anywhere, because it passed, but how we're going to navigate it, and do we take off the safeguards that we had in place to try to protect students who use those Chromebooks?
And what's so curious is that in that survey that you took earlier in the year, the mental health of children was top-notch because of being on too much...
Social media.
Yes, social media. And that was one of their, parents and teachers' concerns was mental health.
There are some carve-outs in that bill that says you can do it for certain things, but it's rather interesting. So either House Bill 24...
Senate Bill, Senate Bill 29.
Senate Bill 29, there you go. Look up Senate Bill 29. It did pass. It was Mr. Hoffman's bill.
I thought it was hard to understand even what they were saying, the language.
Yeah. When you, when you really get down and start to drill it down and look at the practical application of it, the thought of taking off some of the safeguards that we had in place, just, it just didn't seem to resonate. Like, we're out there just purposely wanting to watch what kids are doing. No, we're just wanting to keep them safe, and yet, this could prohibit that in some way, shape, or form. So we'll see how it shakes out.
Well, maybe they'll, you know, when they come back from recess, they'll look at that and make revisions and make it into a new bill. That's a hope.
And hopefully, parents will come forward and say what they want. Protect their kids.
I'm surprised it didn't get a little bit more of that prior to going through committee and then reaching the governor's desk. I think it just depends on how you couch it in your, you know, your...
And who shows up to test them.
For sure, for sure. So anyway, that's another legislative one, just to...
Thank you.
Understand it's out there. Under this section tonight, we only have a few items for board approval. There are Facility Use Requests. You can see those there are giving Hope Charity, which, you know, started as a Transportation Department initiative, which has really grown. They've got their big Children's Christmas event. The United Way of Knox County is going to use the Fieldhouse for a Community Resource Fair, and then the Girl Scout troop, who's meeting at Wigan Street. So those three items for your approval.
Entertain the three Facility Use Requests.
So, I'll second.
Dr. Bennett? Thank you, Ms. Bennett. Any questions? You should call the roll. Dr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Workman?
Yes.
Ms. Regola-Dye?
Yes.
Mrs. Getzmann?
Yes.
Motion carried. Student Services?
No items for information in this section. Do have one item for board approval. Do have one item for board approval. As you know, the continued challenges of students with special needs, and understandably and rightfully so, in this particular instance, we've had to partner with a transportation agency to transport a young person to, you know, outside of our geographical area. And to do so, we had to enter into a contract, and you can see the, it's expensive. And so when you look at that specific contract and just realizing what the cost is per day times, you know, 180 days a year, the cost to educate certain students who need the support can really, really, really be expensive.
I would entertain a motion for the Transportation Services.
Salute.
Thank you, Ms. Regola-Dye.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Workman. Any additional questions? Call the roll.
Ms. Regola-Dye?
Yes.
Mr. Workman?
Yes.
Mr. Ward?
Yes.
Dr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mrs. Getzmann?
Yes.
Motion carried. Moving on to Personnel, Certificated, Licensed Stuff?
We do have a one item for information, a couple salary change notices, some things that come in due to timing and certification. Under Items for Board Approval tonight, we have a number. These are employment issues for the 2425 school year that we're currently in. Obviously, the addition to the agenda of Cynthia Vannan, a retired East Elementary teacher, we put that on there. Number of substitute teacher contracts. Believe it or not, it feels like we just started school, but we're looking at supplemental contracts for winter already, and so you're, you're going to see quite a list of those, and you'll find that most of those really are kind of winter time activities, volunteers, people activity contracts, for laypersons. All of those there tonight for, for your approval.
I would entertain a motion for the certificated.
Salute.
Thank you. I'll call it. Thank you, Mr. Ward and Dr. Bennett. Any questions? Hearing none, would you call the roll?
Mr. Ward?
Yes.
Dr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Workman?
Yes.
Ms. Regola-Dye?
Yes.
Mrs. Getzmann?
Yes.
Classified staff.
Couple items for information. Due to some shifting, we've had some internal transfers, and whether we're completely done with internal transfers yet or not, I'm not sure, because when we get retirements, then people who have transferred show real interest in, you know, a daytime job versus a second shift job. But there's a number of transfers there for you to review. And then items for board approval tonight, again, 2425, pending a favorable BCI FBI background check, a three and three-quarter hour cook, a three-hour cook, food service custodian. We did have to replace that position. And then a second shift, eight-hour custodian at Twin Oak. Number of two-year contracts, who are just kind of in their contract cycle. And then you'll see some substitute employment, and then one-year limited extracurricular contracts. Two additional retirements here. Deborah Baker, a seven-hour cook at Twin Oak, and she will be retiring effective at the end of October. And George, Eddie Bear, he's first shift custodian at Wigan Street. He will also be retiring as of the 31st of October. Hence, you might see some shifting again, where people want to jump into some other positions. And then finally, we have an OBC MOU Registered Behavior Technician Aid Memorandum. We made some special accommodations for those who are willing to take on a much more intensive role in aid categories, primarily in our more specialized units. That required an additional 40 hours of instructional and professional development, and there's a pay differential there for that MOU. We'll put the MOU in place based upon our meeting tonight, but we are going to start some negotiation conversations with OBC within the next couple of months.
I would entertain a motion for classified staff as presented.
Salute.
Thank you, Mr. Regola-Dye. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Workman. Any questions? Hearing none, would you call the roll?
Ms. Regola-Dye?
Yes.
Mr. Workman?
Yes.
Mr. Ward?
Yes.
Dr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mrs. Getzmann?
Yes.
All right. Motion carried.
So I'm going to have to get into something else here really quick. We're going to watch a video together. At least, that's our hope, right, Ms. Judy?
Sorry.
Usually, my screen comes right up with all of my. Yeah. I was hoping my thing would be there. I am looking for my home screen. Should have had this queued up, I'm sorry. Forgot we were doing this. This keyboard is just, it does three of everything when I push it. I do a push. Already done this once. For some reason, I'm not getting all of my saved images below. Do you know how we see all our saved images below, like all our quick links?
Yeah, mine's saved, bookmarked on my tabs, but are you trying to get into Public School Works? Can you go, can you go in through the staff login, the web page?
I don't know if we call it from here, this computer or not.
We can always do it next month if we need to.
Yeah, let's do it.
End of November.
We got to the end of November. The challenge there was, I couldn't just link the video for you to watch because you have to sign in to watch it. So when I tried to link it originally, it kept going back to the login screen. And of course, the login screen is on my computer, which is a single click. And for some reason, this home screen doesn't have all my linked tabs at the bottom, so we'll make sure we get you some sort of a link so that you can do it. There's no quiz. It's simply a 10-minute observation.
About fraud.
About fraud. And so we have to have it done by the end of November, so we have a little bit of time to do it. And it may be something that we can just even give you your quick account, let you do it at home as well. So we'll figure out the best way to kind of move that forward with you. The last thing I had before you finish up, whatever you need to finish up, is we wouldn't, we'd like to think about a board work session in October, and there's been some conversation about maybe having it in an early evening versus a Saturday. Mary can't get away from the Buckeyes, and so she said. I'm just teasing. She didn't really say that, but if we could.
Missed our opportunity.
Last for days. No, wasn't for me.
Really, the conversation would revolve around the facility conversations and some financial conversations as we move forward. We do have to develop a financial plan. That's another new requirement that we have to put together, a legislative requirement, and to focus on just a couple of quick items makes a lot of sense. So I'll have Jessica reach out to each of you. I think I'll start with an evening, if that's okay, and we can bring in some Fritos and something for dinner and. Anyway, go ahead. I'll let you go back to the regular part of the meeting.
I guess it would be better to ask if there are any dates that are a week.
You didn't want to put anybody on the spot? Is there a date that's just not a good day?
I don't know if anybody has October vacation plans. Friday night. If I'm lucky to have it. I'm having a good time. I'm having surgery on the 25th, so let's do it before that.
Before.
Okay.
25th of October. Okay. You mean the days of the week?
Yeah, there's like, or if, I didn't know if anybody had like a vacation plan in October or anything like that.
I have a student achievement leadership meeting on the 15th.
Okay.
Yes, she has.
We have a career center on the 10th.
Days.
Yeah, yeah.
I think what, we do have a program we could use where it sends out like.
Do a whole thing.
Yeah, do a whole, like this, four or five dates, and you pick the ones you can do, and it kind of, so maybe I'll have.
Okay, yeah. Perfect.
Okay, good.
All right, thank you. All right. We will move on to our board member comments, and who would like to start tonight? Dr. Bennett?
I also wanted to thank the teachers for our great report card results and our administrators who encouraged the teachers. I was very pleased with the results. I was also reflecting this week about being a parent and investing in our kids, and I know that parents are so busy with sports and all of those activities, and I hear from my girls how challenging it is to keep up with everything, but I just want to encourage parents that investing in your children, you'll never be sorry, and that these years go by very, very quickly. So spend the time that you need to with your kids and enjoy their activities and just support them any way you can. And then I'd also like to thank all the donors that we have. We get so many donations and the grants that our kids receive in graduation scholarships, and we're just very blessed in our community with generosity. So I just wanted to give a shout out and thank all of our community and parents and businesses for supporting our school. Okay. Ms. Regola-Dye?
Thank you. I was not able to attend the last month's meeting, but I'd like to say thank you to our summer crew and all those who worked so hard to prepare for the school year. And a big thank you to the community, again, for all the support they give our Mount Vernon City Schools. I'd like to also give a shout out to our athletic departments and our music departments, who just are working so hard to provide the best for our children. So thank you.
Okay. Well, I too would like to, thanks to the school leadership, the central office, our teachers about the district report card. I was pleased, you know, comparing data, and I'm one of those people who likes the data, so I was looking at things back and forth, and it was like, okay, okay, this is a good report card. So I certainly appreciate that. And, you know, and you mentioned the summer crews, you know, here a moment ago, and, you know, there's all kinds of chaotic things that you know, you have to deal with when the school year gets started, and, you know, trying to take care of things, and, you know, and the district really got thrown a couple of curves here not too long ago with electric lines to the high school and fiber optic cords getting cut, and all those infrastructure things that really, without them, you don't have much going. And so I wanted to say thanks to those that roll up their sleeves and really took care of some things. I mean, Matt Dill, I was seeing updates all weekend about, about the internet from our superintendent in Aramark dealing with food that got delivered, and then the power went out. And the football game, our home football game was getting started, and just having to do that, you know, it's really just a big thank you to the people that we have in place that will roll up their sleeves and just take care of it.
Right.
And because they care, that's what we love. So thank you for that.
Mr. Workman?
Well, a lot of things I'd like to echo. You know, hearing school getting off to a smooth start doesn't happen by chance, and with all the coordination, everything Jeff had mentioned, appreciate the folks that do that. Certainly proud of the school grade card, and I think it really puts it in perspective when you look at the other schools similar to our size and even the state, what we're doing. So I know some people may focus on a three-star, but, you know, focusing on how we are in comparison with other schools, I think, is really relevant, so I appreciate seeing that. And I just also like to thank the folks that are on the Facilities Committee. It's a lot of time to meet monthly, a few hours, you know, that evening. Again, a lot of good conversation, I think, some really good things will come out of that. One thing I thought really interesting is that, you know, of the parents that are in there, you know, thinking this through, whatever we decide to do, especially with the new bill, how far in advance the planning takes on that, and it will very unlikely affect any of the kids or the parents that are in there, and I just thought about that.
It's probably true.
You know, obviously, everybody should have an opinion. It was good conversation, but I, you know, looking and it's like, well, unlikely not affect them, but it needs to be done, and I'm confident that we can come up with a good plan there.
Great.
And I would just echo and kind of summarize what everybody said. We have so many positive things. We had the musical this past weekend that all of our kids were in. I unfortunately wasn't able to attend, but I've heard nothing but gloating remarks about that. And again, it's just that community piece, that we live in a community that truly cares about our kids, from donors to report cards to our staff, to our bus drivers, to our custodians. They all care about our kids, our facilities, and the excellence that we can offer in our district, and I think it just resonates over and over and over again. And the community members that are on the Facility Committee, unbelie, I mean, engaged, I mean, engaged, concerned, caring, and we wouldn't, I think Bill would agree, we wouldn't be in the position that we're in with that facilities if they didn't care and if they don't have these ongoing questions about what's going to happen in our community. How is it going to affect the whole? And that's the positive of it. So we're just grateful that we live in such a caring community that really takes it to heart, so thank you for calling that. Bill, any closing or?
You know, I guess I would have one really kind of a joyful Friday. Last Friday, I had the opportunity to go over to Columbia Elementary, and they had a grandparents VIP afternoon, and all the second graders had to get partnered up with somebody, and, you know, it was a grandparent or a VIP. So you rotated through six stations, and it was all about reading and literacy. And I had landed in Brooklyn, and, you know, they weren't able to have their grandparents there, and so I was able to kind of step in and to get to know those two kiddos and to go to all those stations and read with them. It was, it was really enjoyable. And so to see what those special things that are going on in the buildings, and they happen in every building. It just so happened to be at Columbia with VIP grandparents, and so those teachers did a great job, and those kids did a great job. We'll end on that.
There you go. Judy, anything else you have to add?
I can't top any of that.
Okay.
It is wonderful communities. Yes, it is. Yes, we're blessed.
And our resources look good.
That's right.
Ignore that.
With that, I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
Salute.
Thank you, Mr. Regola-Dye. And a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Workman. Would you call the roll?
Ms. Regola-Dye?
Yes.
Mr. Workman?
Yes.
Mr. Ward?
Yes.
Dr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mrs. Getzmann?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you very much, and look forward to that email from the.
Thank you very much, and look forward to that email from the.